Hello, hello everyone. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oil. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we're joined by our amazing team and you're going to get to see them here in just a moment. If you're brand new, welcome. We're really excited to have you. We do this every Thursday at noon. And if you came here looking for help today, you're in the right place. Go ahead and start giving us those questions because we got your answers in the Q and A here live on Zoom. Now, before we get into our special guest and our training and all of our talks about intentions and all this wonderful stuff that we're going to do today, our founder Amanda has a special announcement to make. So Amanda, go ahead.
Good morning, everyone, or afternoon. It is my pleasure to say that our team has grown by one again. But not necessarily going to be answering your questions, but maybe more helping her mom answer your questions or doing your website builds. I am pleased to announce that Jessica has had her baby and her name is Grace Rose. And they are on today to let you see the new baby. Jessica?
Hi, everyone. Here's Grace. We just thought we would pop on real quick for a few minutes to meet everyone and she's nice and awake. So that was the perfect time. So yeah, here she is. She's six weeks old this week. So we're growing like a weed.
So wonderful and such good timing as well that she is just wide awake and here for everybody to see. So welcome Grace to the family. She's so cute. Okay, we could just sit and stare at the baby the whole time. I'm super good with that. Babies and puppies all day, man, all day. All right. So Brady Bunch, real quick, just a quick shout out. We've got our team here today, Jess, Colin and Julie. We have founders Greg and Amanda. And today, we also have a very special guest who is here. Again, you've met her before. If you haven't, you're in for a treat. Platinum Young Living leader Jackie McLaughlin. She's been with this business for almost 20 years and she's always got amazing insights to share. So again, if you've got questions, head over to the Q and A and let's add those. I'm going to go through a couple of quick slides here just to get you guys familiar with some information we're going to be going over. And then we're going to get to Jackie and she's going to share a little bit of a story about a little coaching session she had recently. We were just talking about the other day, she and I, and some insights into how you can use what she shared with her team to grow Young Living. So without further ado, let's get over to our slides here and I will get the ball rolling. If my tech wants to work with me, it does. Perfect. Okay. So, oh yeah, sorry. I'm going to stop video. If you guys could turn your videos off real quick so we could get a good recording here. Thanks, guys. All right. Excellent. So again, this is the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oil. We do this every week at noon Eastern time. And today we're talking about the one thing you should always do before you work your business. The thing that can determine the results that you get, no matter what auction it is that you're taking. If you're about to share, if you're about to prospect, if you're about to work with a team member, whatever that might be. And this is something that is, it's very Gary centric. This is very what would Gary do? All right. So what's happening today is first, we're going to have some training. We do have several member website reviews. And then we're going to do Q and A and support throughout. And at the end, if you still like need help and we need to walk through and show you how to do something or get something done in your account, we're here to help you do that. Just make sure that you put those questions in the Q and A because our chat can get a little wild. So again, go ahead and add those to the Q and A for me. And if you are reading this or seeing this in the future, hello, you can join us on one of these live Zoom calls by going to get oiling.com/weeklyworksession. You will get access to these live calls where you can work with us together live and as well as get the replay as soon as it comes out. And if you want a site review, and this doesn't necessarily mean you need to have had your site built. If you just need help and you just want somebody to just help with your strategy and work you through this process, get oiling.com/websitereview is where you want to go. And you can sign up, get onto the calendar and be one of the people who is working with us in a dedicated session on one of these calls. All right. So for today's training, we're going to talk about the one thing that costs you nothing that can transform your results instantly. We're going to talk about a platinum protocol for setting intent in your work and how to put it to use in your business. So I want to ask you guys a quick question. Maybe let me know in the chat, you know, say obvious, if it's obvious, right? Or maybe just to show hands. Do you know Gary's Great Day Protocol? How many of us know Gary's Great Day Protocol? And how many of you use it? Maybe tell us in the comments. Do you use Gary's Great Day Protocol? Do you use it every day? Do you use it as often as you can remember to, right? What are the instances where you remember to use it? How do you use that protocol? So if you know, if you know Gary's Great Day Protocol, and maybe if you don't, you know that there's a power behind intent. The power of intent becomes even more powerful when you oil it, right? But did you, do you actually keep an intention practice for growing your business? Do you know that if you intend to have a great day, if you do Gary's Great Day Protocol and you oil up and you keep these intentions, you're setting a tone for your whole day. But do you set a tone for when you sit down to scroll Facebook, looking for conversations you can start? Do you sit down and set a tone and take in oils before you sit down to work on your good oiling site? Right? Before you share Young Living, before you sit down with someone, before you take a call? Do you have an intention practice? Maybe show a hands again. Do you have intention practice that you actively consistently use and keep when you're growing your business? Most of us don't, right? So I want to introduce you before I show you too much here on my slides. We can turn our video back on, you guys. I want to introduce you guys to a dear friend of mine who is a platinum leader in this company. Who's been with this company for close to 20 years now. And she knows a thing or two about how this stuff works. And we were talking, and please you guys go ahead and turn your videos back on. We were talking a day before yesterday, I think, talk a lot about a call. Jackie, you were on a call with a, with a member of your team who, I don't know, maybe they weren't very happy with the results they were getting. Or I guess just tell us a little bit about this sort of revelation and sort of what you do. Because this is the kind of thing, if you've been doing this for a long time, it might feel obvious, right? But it's something that a lot of us could really stand to pick up sooner and actually start using.
Yeah. Well, thanks, Ashley. And thank you for that lovely introduction. Yeah, I think the thing, it's kind of like, you know how the stuff that you have in your life that is so awesome? And you just kind of take it for granted. Well, we kind of do that in our businesses too. And we know that the oils work and we know that setting an intention with an oil is an incredibly powerful thing to do. But we kind of take it for granted. We're out there teaching it to everybody and we forget to do it ourselves. So I was having a discussion with one of my team members the other day and she was telling me she was going to meet with someone. And we, and I was asking her those questions about, okay, how do you plan to? What's your intention for your meeting? How do you plan to go about it? What are you going to do with it? And she was like, well, I don't know. And I said, well, what's, what's, how did you set it up? What was the intent when you set it up? You know, is it, are you just meeting somebody for coffee or is it very specific topic related? You know, look at what the purpose of the meeting is in the first place. And then when she told me, well, you know, I'm going to go meet with her. I've talked to her about oils before. And she's got some questions and things like that. I said, perfect. So when you set your intention to talk to people about things, I asked her if she, if she had talked to her about the business opportunity or if she had talked to her yet about the essential rewards. And like a lot of our members do, they were like, no, you know, they're very timid about bringing those things up because they have a lot of fear in their bodies about that. And so setting a really powerful intention is really paramount to how your energy. And I know I've talked about this before. I don't know if you guys have heard it or not. But the energy that you have precedes you everywhere you go. So if you're going to go talk to somebody, you want your energy to be upbeat, you know, very positive, very confident. You want your energy that precedes you to say, you need me and I've got everything you need and let's get to it, right? So the way you do that is by setting that intention. And a lot of times people don't realize that if you just grab an oil, like as an example, you know, I can grab motivation right here. It's one of my favorites. I keep it close. And if I'm gonna, if I don't feel like doing something, like I'm getting ready to meet with this gal and I'm just not, I'm just not in it. I need to get in it before I go meet her, right? Okay. So motivation is a great oil. You just put the oil in your hand and you, and you smell it. And you ask yourself some questions, you know, you, if you are in love with Young Living and you remind yourself you're in Young, you're in love with Young Living, as you go into that meeting, it exudes, I'm in love with Young Living and there you should be too. And so when you, when you set that intention, you, you ask yourself questions like, okay, what's my favorite product and why? It's not just, I love lavender. Why do I love lavender? Because it freaking saved my life. That's why. And if you get in touch with that emotion of why you love it, that is a very powerful energy that precedes you when you walk in to talk to somebody. And it's the same thing if you're talking to, if you want to talk to somebody about the business, you know? People are timid about that because they know they're, they've got that old MLM fear thing going on that they're afraid. Everybody hates them and wants to throw eggs at them if they talk about MLMs. And so you just have to, you have to be confident that this is the best thing that has ever happened to you for your finances. And when you exude that energy, because you truly believe it, it just precedes you and nobody's going to complain or object. And so if you're, if you've already started earning money, even if it's just enough to pay for your product, is that not huge? I mean, if you're like me, paying for my product is like amazing. And so you, you ask that question of yourself, what has doing Young Living as a business done for me financially? And whatever the answer to that is, you visit that within, you know, you embody the emotions of that excitement and you're falling in love with Young Living all over again. Because when you revisit your love for the company, your love for the products, your love for the foundation, your love for all the things that they do, that energy precedes you every time you talk to someone. And when those people listen to you, they have a completely different way to respond to you. The way they react to your questions is completely different than when you go in there afraid of what they're thinking. And I don't want to mention that, you know, you could earn some money because, and I don't want to tell them there's this reward program that my God, why wouldn't you? Because hello, you're, you're saving them more money. You're giving them free stuff. I mean, how much better can it get? I mean, do you know anybody that gives you up to 25% back every time you buy? I don't. This, it doesn't exist. When you get excited about that and you own it and that is just in your energy and you go to talk to people, you don't get objections. You just get enrollments. So we had that discussion.
So I don't know, how many of you guys are like, duh, that's so obvious, right? I need to get jazzed up about this before I do this. Like, can, can we see a show of hands? Like, does that feel like, yeah, why am I not doing that? So let's talk about what this can look like if we can make this a practice, right? Like we have the Great Day Protocol, Gary's Great Day Protocol. That's, you know, that's for oils. You're doing specific things, right? You're thinking specific things. So what does it look like? Like if you were to do this, like what is like an oil that you, how do you know what oil to use? How do you, how do you start with this? Does it matter what oil you use?
Well, you know, that's a really good question, Ashley, because it does change for me. There's times when I'll go with a specific protocol, like the Great Day Protocol. I may say, you know what, I'm just going to do that for 30 days. And I, and I do it every day with very specific intent and always wonderful things come out of it. And then there may be a day where I wake up and I may have already done my Great Day Protocol. But then I also go, you know what, I need some motivation. And or maybe I'm feeling a little funky and maybe highest potential or believe. Maybe I just had a bunch of people say no to me and I'm feeling a little rejected. And I'm going to put on some believe and say, you know what? I believe today is going to be great and everybody I talk to is going to be just so excited to get started. And so I set that intention. So it kind of depends on where you are and what you need, you know? So you know, am I feeling a little down the dumps? Maybe you need some joy. Am I feeling like I need some believe or do I feel like I need some gratitude? I mean, gratitude is one of my favorites. I actually like to wear it for personal fragrance. There's no more powerful emotion than gratitude. If you start practicing gratitude, things change. I'm, I'm telling you, I've seen it in action. So the oils are what speaks to you or what you feel like you might need.
Perfect. So first we oil. And then what do we do? I mean, and I think that this is important, right? Maybe, maybe you ask yourself different questions at different points or is it always the same thing, right? Because when you're sitting down to get on Facebook and write a post, right? Or to write a blog, you know, to go on your good oiling site or to work on your good oiling site or to, or to, you know, go to a meeting like this, this was the case that you were talking about before. She was going to sit down with someone and she may or may not be sharing Young Living and she wasn't going with set intentions. So what are some of the things that you ask yourself or say to yourself to bring yourself to that place where you are, you know, in that mode that you really want to be and bringing that energy with you to the work that you're doing?
If I'm going into a meeting where I'm just, it's sort of open ended and there's not really a specific goal in mind. And then I'm just going to do those things I mentioned where I'm going to fall in love with Young Living. I'm going to say, okay, what's my favorite product and why? What's it done for me? How many people's lives have I impacted positively by sharing Young Living? Any of those kinds of questions that helped me get back in touch with why I love it and why I think everybody should be a part of it. And then I'm going to just going to go in and listen, you know? If I'm going into a meeting and I'm asking questions and I'm listening, it's going to take me wherever we need to go. Because being an attentive listener and paying attention to what people are saying is the, it's the bee's knees. I mean, it's, it's the only thing that's going to always work.
So, so, so let's talk about that then. If we're, can we just imagine you guys? And let's just see if there's anything in the chat here. Do you guys have any questions? Like when we're talking about feeling pushy, actually, here's, here's a really important point we need to bring up, right? Where Jackie, you said your energy precedes you. If you are going into a conversation worried about being pushy, you're going to get in your own way, right?
Yep.
If you are going into a meeting or you're going to sit down or you can't do anything, again, your energy precedes you. If you have hangups about price, hangups about this business model, this business, these things are going to get in front of you, right? So what are, what are some of the things? So you, you've got your oils that you like to use. Are there, are there any other tools that you use for this? Like, do you keep affirmations? Like, do you keep anything maybe written nearby you? Like, that would actually be a really cool thing to consider doing if you don't have this already, right? Frame, frame an affirmation and put it on your desk, right?
Affirmations, absolutely. Visit them every day consistently. Because I've been in some recent trainings with Richard Brooke. And one of the things he talks about is when you want to change your story, in other words, your negative, your negative thing that's tripping you up, you figure out what that is. So if it's, I'm afraid of being pushing, that's your story. And the way you get rid of that story is to make affirmations that state the opposite and visit them over and over and over and over and over and over. And say them in your sleep and say them while you're driving and say them constantly. Because that repetition is what creates a new thought pattern. It's not putting it, you know, I love having them on a framed piece. So it reminds me to keep looking at them. But if you're going to frame it and make it all pretty, don't make it an art piece and not look at it. You've got to actually say them and believe it and practice it. And so you can change those things. But when it, I know somebody asked it, you know, if it's too pushy, talking about the business when you're just trying to talk to them about the products, you don't have to just like fire hose them with business stuff. You, talking about the business could be one sentence in your whole visit. And that one sentence could be, oh, and by the way, for those that are interested, we have a way that you can share with other people and actually earn enough money to pay for your stuff and leave it there. You don't have to bombard them with, oh, you need to do the business and yada, yada, yada. Just bring it up. So they're aware that that's a potential thing and if they want to pursue it, they will ask you questions.
That's right. That's right. I think there's another part of this, just kind of preceding the point here as well, is that we're going in with an intention to serve, not with an intention to close, right? That's, that's kind of where the pushy energy comes from, right? Is where we're saying, I need to make this sale. We're going to come across pushy, right? So what are, what, what's something that you might say to yourself or coach a teammate to say to themselves going into a meeting? So that they, they don't push that urgency energy out?
Yeah. Well, you know, again, it goes all the way back to what I'd always teach about opening the questions. If you're asking them questions and finding out what their needs are and you're helping them discover the needs, but also your, your possible solutions. In other words, if I'm going into somebody and I say, you know, what is, what is something that you would love to see better in your life? What's something that if it got better, if it improved, it would be a noticeable thing to you and you would be happy about it? Anything like that. And, you know, they might say, well, you know, if I could just get a full night's sleep, I would, I would feel so much better. I'd have more energy. I wouldn't get sick as often. I, this, I, that. They're already giving you all the information you need for your whole conversation. But you have to ask the question and then listen. The biggest problem most people make is that they go into a meeting with a predetermined, this is what I'm going to tell them. And this is what I'm going to say. And this is what I hope to accomplish. And that's when the pushy part comes in. So if you're just going in with questions and then asking ways, you know, figuring out ways that you can help them. So if somebody said, you know, yeah, I'd love to get some sleep. Well, what if I told you that there are some things that you can do naturally that have, other people have found that it really just solved all their sleeping problems? Would you be interested in hearing more about it? I'm not telling her. I'm not telling her, try lavender. I'm not telling her about sleep essence. I'm not telling her about anything. I'm just telling her there's stuff there. Do you want to know? Because if they ask you to tell them, how can they get mad at you if they've asked? But they're not going to like it if you just tell them without them asking. And how are they going to ask? You got to know what, what the issue is first.
So, so really I think it's important for those of us who, who get hung up on this to not only just oil up and then remind ourselves why we love this and why we're excited about this before we get started. But it's important for us to also hold that what we're here to do is not to convince or sell, but to connect a need that they have with something that we know will serve them, right?
Yeah.
Absolutely. So those, we want to hold those. And then of course, we want to, to keep that energy of service throughout whatever that interaction is. I know we're focusing a lot on when we're communicating with people one-on-one. And I think this is where we trip ourselves up the most honestly, because we, we get so worried and so caught up. And, and that's where our, we can see our energy reflected back to us in the objections that we get and the reactions that we get from others. People mirror each other more than you think, especially if you're face to face. And especially if you're dealing with an impact, like total mirrors.
Another topic that is often a hang up for people is talking about essential rewards. And so if you're talking to someone, let's say somebody told me that they have digestive issues. And I asked them the questions about, would you be interested in learning about other things? And they said, yes. And then we had a further discussion and we came up with, okay, they're going to try Life9 probiotics and they're going to try enzymes and they're going to try digestives. They're going to get three products. And they're going to try that. And they're going to, and I've already told them, you know, this, when you want to change things that are going on in your body, it usually takes up to 90 days. So you, it's not something that I'm going to give you a magic bottle of oil and you're going to smell it and poof, the magic fairy just dipped their wand and you're fixed. It's not like that. So we're going to recommend supplements that are going to help you, but it's going to take consistent use and daily, you know, effort on your part. And so they said, yes, yes, I want that. I'm going to try that. So then I'm going to say, okay, great. Now I need to tell you that if you, if you place this order through our essential rewards monthly program, you're going to save more money. You're going to get up to 25% back over, over time. And you're going to get free stuff, you know, points for free products. And so, you know, I recommend that you order it through your essential rewards. So you get the best thing for your buck. How does that sound? Now, I have never had anybody tell me, oh, that sounds, you know, they all say that sounds great. Nobody says, I don't think I want to get free stuff and save money. And because they've already said they're going to take it at least three months to see if it works, right? So don't be shy about essential rewards. You're helping them. It's a big plus. It's a bonus. It's like your huge gift you're giving them. If you go into it timid about telling them about essential rewards because it makes them order every month, like how are you helping them with anything? I mean, if you're just signing them up with a oils kit and, and because it's trendy and people like the oils and it's an easy enrollment, then, you know, you're probably not going to get people on ER because why would they need them next month? They're going to last a while. But if you're actually helping people, you're probably going to get them on at least Nezare Redd and probably other supplements. And if you don't know your stuff, that's why you get your reference book out and you, if you need to take it with you, you take it with you. If you don't know the answers, you can look them up right in front of people. They like that.
Yeah. And, and it's better for duplicating. If that person ever decides to share and join, they're going to see that they don't have to know everything. I hope you guys, I feel like I say this all the time. The key to duplication is not knowing anything and only knowing what you know and saying, I got a thing that knows this better than me. Want to see it? That's, that's it. That's how you win at this business, you guys. And of course, bring the energy and the belief. That's the thing that converts that energy that Jackie's talking about. It provides you, it is the thing that makes them say, yes, there's a feeling. And even if you are in, you know, it's a little harder to pull off in one of these or in Facebook Messenger. This is why it's so important for you to get on a Zoom, get on a phone call or get in person with your prospects. Because it does so much of the heavy lifting, right? But some of it still comes across. I mean, it influences the way you choose to make decisions, right? Your intent is the thing that powers every action that you take because your intent embodies your commitment to getting something done. And based on what that intent is, you may or may not take different action steps toward that end, right? And so you can absolutely get in your own way if we don't have the right intent in place. You know, we started talking here a little bit about, about what you say when you're signing someone up for essential rewards. For those of you who are, maybe just a quick show of hands, how many of you are joining Jackie and I for a second? Get together today at 1:30 Eastern, this training. Jackie and I have been going through her training or rather her, her business systems as a platinum leader. And as someone who's been in business for 40 years, I mean, you've been in this business for, for almost 20 and Young Living. You know what you're doing here, but you knew how to run a business before you got started here. And so Jackie's got really smart systems, you guys. And if you go to jackymclofflin.com/platinum, I shortened that link for you. You can, you can sign up and, and hop on to, hop on to that totally free training. Last week, we talked about your, your prospecting and networking systems. And by the way, you guys, you will get the replay for if you missed the first ones. We're not, there's no catches here or anything. And I also, we have a getaway lane resource bundle from Jackie from last week. We have one for this week. We're talking about onboarding new members. And that what we're talking about here is actually something that is, just to go back to the duplication conversation, it's key to duplicating. How you get someone started is how they get people started. How you operate is how they believe they need to operate. This is a monkey see, monkey do business. And if monkey being super complicated and not doing things right, then monkey's not going to see duplication. So, um, so yeah, if you go to jackymclofflin.com and we should definitely put that in the chat, forward slash platinum, you guys can sign up for that training today and you're going to be sharing. We actually have it written in a script exactly what Jackie said to enroll for one. So you get all of that written out. This is something for those of you who didn't know, Jackie gave, started offering this for free just to folks who were joining Young Living or joining Get Oil during Aroma Sharing and Convention for Young Living. And we just opened this up and made it available to all of our members. So, so it's totally free. You guys should definitely come join. You're going to hear a lot more from Jackie here in about an hour. Uh, you're going to hear a lot more from Jackie here in about an hour, if you're, if you're lying. Um, all right. So is there anything else that you would like to add? I'd like for us to go over and, you know, get into our, our website reviews and stuff. And I really appreciate you coming here today and talking about how you bring intention uh, and oiling intention for the table in your business. But yeah, is there anything else you'd like to close with?
Uh, the only thing I would say is, is really, you know, is put a note on your calendar or whatever, on your computer to set an intention for everything you do. Like Ashley said earlier, if you're sitting down to work on your ghetto, I think website, grab some clarity, you know, figure out what it is you're going to do, set an intention that I'm going to focus on this and I'm going to do it for however long. You know, whatever your schedule is, and I'm going to get, uh, it's going to be easy, you know, whatever you want your intention to be. A lot of people struggle because they're, you know, it's techie and they're worried that Get Oil Link makes it so easy. If I can do it, anybody can do it. But still, because it's computer, people freak out, right? And so set the intention that this is going to be easy and it's going to happen with grace and ease. And set an intention for everything you do, not just in your business, but in your life.
Absolutely. Oh, and you know what? Maybe one more thing, because I think this would be really helpful to everyone who's here and everyone who will be a part of, of following this protocol that you're talking about in the future. Basically all the, all that this entails is for you to oil up and use what makes you feel good right now. And that's totally fluid. And this is why it doesn't cost you a thing. You're here right now. You got an oil. You got an oil that you love, at least one, right? All, all y'all, everybody. So oil up and then pick an affirmation or ask yourself some key questions. And actually before I get into, uh, sharing, uh, and, and doing our, um, doing our, our, our website reviews, let's talk about this real quick and recap. So oil up with the oils that make you feel awesome. And here's some recommendations from Jackie, believe gratitude, motivation, awaken inspiration. Or just grab your lavender, your lemon, whatever you love, right? Then explore affirming products, questions, right? Uh, and, and again, if you have affirmations that are written affirmations, this is a great place to go with this. But specific to this, and I think Jackie, the reason why we brought this up is that I, I don't know what's in the air right now. If people are just allergic to change or they don't see or understand the amazing smart business decisions that corporate is making right now for the future of this company and what that means for you and your business generationally, long-term. This company is making brilliant, smart moves right now. And yes, it takes a while to completely overhaul tech and systems and that kind of thing. Uh, but if you don't see and understand in your being before you go into your next meeting, before you sit down to do something today, or if this maybe is a thing that's holding you up and keeping you from going out and sharing right now, why don't we ask ourselves a couple of questions and reset our energy and get on the right track? First, what's my favorite product? What, what do I love? How do I feel after I take Shaddering Shad? What does lavender do for me at bedtime? Uh, you know, what is, what is valor do for you? I feel like valor has done something incredible for everybody. Um, okay. So what, what has it done for me? What's my product? What's it done for me? And what would my life be like without it? What would your life right now be like without Young Living? Start feeling grateful for how much you've changed, right? And how much things have changed for you. Even if you've just started using product, these oils change your body's chemistry, you guys. This is instant, right? You don't need to have been with Young Living or use a product of a jillion years to have a story like this for you to attune yourself to so that you're in the right energy. And then of course, how many, this is the most important part, how many lives have I positively impacted with Young Living? And this doesn't necessarily mean that you've shared it or that you've sold it. This could mean that you've changed. And that's changed how you work with other people in any area of your life. Think about the transformation that's taken place in you physically, chemically, in your mind, in your heart, right? Think about those things. And then think about the stories, the testimonials, the gratefulness and the depth of relationships that you have around you that are strengthened, grown or exist because of this company, because of the products. Now, on the business side, I'm looking at y'all leader, looking at you right now. I want you to explore some affirming business questions. What has my young living income allowed me to do or be or have that I could not or did not have before? Are you staying home with your kids, right? Are you taking an extra vacation? Is your cell phone bill paid? Whatever that is, what would your life look like if you didn't have it? Start exploring gratitude, you guys. Jackie wrote all this stuff out for me yesterday. I'm just helping. Ask yourself these questions, like keep these questions near you and remind yourself, if you feel like you're about to start to complain or, 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 or you just kind of feel like, I don't feel like it. Ask yourself, what has it done for me? Like, I think you're in the story of what this has done for you and how far have I come in my personal growth? Thanks to Young Living. Thanks to this opportunity, to your team, to Gary, to the oils, to the company. How far have you come? Thanks to this company. And how many lives have you positively impacted with Young Living? Think about the stories, think about the testimonials, think about that gratitude. All right. Remember to revisit your passion, you guys. Fall in love with Young Living again. This is so brilliant, Jackie. I feel like this is, it's something that feels so obvious, but we don't think to do it, right? Revisit your passion, fall in love with them again. Your love energy will always precede you in everything you do, whether you're sitting down to write an email newsletter to your team, send a text, invite somebody to look at information, get on a care call, go into a group and ask a question or, or respond to something, right? The affirmations that you do will give you the posture that you need to get the result that you want and your intention and your energy will overcome any fear that you have. And guys, you heard it from Jackie. I'm just doing the, the good work of reading what she wrote for me. So make sure that you join us later today, you guys. That's jackymclofflin.com/ platinum. There's a really great series. Uh, it is available to you. You can invite your teams. It's free. And today we're going to be talking about getting your people started correctly so that you duplicate.
There's a typo in platinum, just FYI.
Oh, thank you. Sorry. I did that late. It is platinum, but correctly spelled. I did like the link is correct. If you actually type it in, it goes to the right place. So, thank you so much for being here, Jackie. And we're going to invite out, uh, we have two folks who are booked today. Uh, Lorraine and Tina, if you are here, if you would, um, pretty please, yes, you're both here. Um, all right. Thank you for raising your hands for me. Uh, I'm going to find you again. All right, Lorraine, I'm going to bring you out first. Welcome. Good to have you here.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I, tell me a little bit about what kinds of, uh, look or, or help you're looking for uh, with your site. And then I'll bring it up and we'll, we'll take a look.
Well, when I started, I didn't even know what went on a website. I was clueless and I have changed it and changed it and changed it. Um, I want your, um, feedback of, I want to present myself better or present myself at all because I haven't online. So I was clueless starting. As Colin knows.
All right. Awesome. Uh, let me go ahead and open it up. So we're, we're going to take a look at your homepage then.
Okay.
I love, love, love the URL that you've chosen. I think that this is an excellent address. Uh, let me see if I can get this situated so it might look or work better on screens that aren't as enormous as mine. Let's see. Good. Okay. So, um, this is great. Um, this is, I love this pretty little flowers. And oh, by the way, you guys, check out what she did. Zoom. There it is. Cool. All right. So, um, one thing you want to make sure you do is you're going to want to hit enter after your image here. Do you see how it's got your name over here?
Oh, I just changed that earlier because everything is so big. Seems like all the pictures are big though.
Yeah. So all you have to do is just, um, stick your little cursor right next to you or actually put it right in front of the L and then just, you know, move it over one and then just hit enter and, uh, that'll, that'll put a, a full break there for you. Yeah. Um, all right. So this is good. So glad you found me. This is really good. I like this. Um, where are people finding you right now?
They're not.
Okay. Where do you, where do you intend to be found? So this is, um, in some ways your site's going to be a beacon, but that's more of a long-term thing if you're blogging. So are you on like social media or are you giving talks? Like what is, uh, what is showing up out and putting yourself out there in the world look like for you?
It doesn't right now. I had a Young Living office, was very analog. So being online is very new for me.
Okay. Oh, that's exciting.
I'm going back to all my contacts because I did vending booths and did everything one-to-one.
Okay. Yeah, no, that's great. I mean, that's, that's like the original way of building this business. So no, that's, that's really, really cool. Um, you have a lot of content here and you have a lot of potential to share. Uh, content that is really helpful and would draw the right people into you. So being a certified natural health professional, there's a range of topics, uh, that you could be showing up and talking about in your blog. Uh, is that something that you have set up on your site yet or no?
I don't have a blog.
Okay. So, um, a couple of things, blogs can be a, a good thing for you to have just to establish your credibility in the beginning. Uh, because that's going to, um, you know, people want to see, like you say, okay, I'm, I'm a professional. I'm an expert. I know what I'm talking about. Um, you know, the, the next thing that goes through someone's mind is, well, you know, what if they've written, like, where is them doing their thing? Where can I see them doing their thing? And so a couple of great options here for you, uh, being that you already ha- are steeped in knowledge that you could be sharing, uh, is making quick YouTube videos, five minutes, uh, sharing how to get a benefit. Um, doesn't have to be oiled. In fact, the majority of the time it probably should not be oiled necessarily, uh, unless you just really want to be all about oils on your channel.
Um, no.
So, right. And that's, it's, you're going to, for Young Living specifically, you're going to build more trust with people as a content creator who's talking about things that aren't just oils. Um, because you're, you're talking about what helps that person specifically. And that's going to be the next thing that, that, that I, I would recommend to you. Um, as it stands right now, you've done a beautiful job. It's nice muted colors. Uh, it's easy to read and follow, uh, and, and you've done, you've done a great job with setting all of this up. It looks really good. Um, yeah, yeah, absolutely. What I would recommend just as, as some thoughts to, uh, to further refine and take it to the next level is to consider using this, well, actually first I would take this, uh, Lorraine Saba and put it as your site logo. Uh, and
That's what I thought I did.
And then use this real estate right here on, on this part of the page to use words to call out to your ideal person. Now, are you a part of any of the courses, uh, that our content partners offer that sort of teach elements of our system? Just, just so I'm aware.
Like
Go for gold or, um,
Not yet.
Okay, okay. So, um, so in trying to remember if there's one, okay. So basically what you want, what you want to be doing and thinking about is who the one person is, right? So going back like 20 years ago in marketing or even like 15, uh, in, in the world of marketing, we were niching, right? We were saying, I am in the health and wellness niche, right? Or I'm in the crunchy niche or whatever. Um, where we've gone since then is to a place where you really do have the ability to reach and speak to one person. Um, and that's come about with social advertising and just how much, uh, and it's, it's, it's kind of scary. It's kind of freaky, like how much these, these, uh, big brothers know about us, but that's what makes, uh, marketing so effective, right? Like we can make sure that we reach people who are into a certain influencer, who, uh, are within a certain age range and all of this kind of stuff. So it really behooves you because the way that people are being influenced now, and, and this is kind of to get to the point, you don't necessarily need to do Facebook advertising, but the way people are influenced now is, um, is, is you can actually see that through the means of advertising that is the most effective at the time. And what that means is that people are reached with more and more personalized messages now than they ever were before. And it makes sense for you to know who you're speaking to, one-to-one, and to call them out in, in the, in the work that you do. So you know that you have oils, of course, uh, but you're also a certified health, natural health professional. So who is it that you help with that? Or who's it that you want to be helping with that? Um, what's her eye color? Where does she shop? Like, you know, what, how does, how does she want to hear from someone like you, right?
I do have my home.
Oh, you do? Perfect. Who is she?
It's not coming through. Um, empty nester, um, Christian women, doesn't have to be Christian. That's, um, who have lost their purpose. And they're looking for a purpose and just getting back to taking care of them because they've, um, served other people for so long.
Okay. Okay. So, um, I help servant-hearted women walk in purpose. Now, what, how do you help them do that? Did I lose audio? Oh, there you are.
No, um, I don't have an answer like that.
Okay. So the answer is, um, it's going to be the first, most obvious one that comes to mind. If someone who is that person to you in your life said, Lorraine, I feel like I've lost my way, like what can I do? You're going to say, well, first we need to do this and then we need to do that, and then we need to do that. And it's going to be pretty simple and straightforward. Um, there's not a lot of digging you're probably going to have to do because this is something that's right on your heart, right? Um, it's something that you, you probably already do. So all you need to do is, is say, I helped this person get do be have this thing, right? So I help servant-hearted women walk, uh, you know, discover their path, right? Or, or, or walk boldly in their path that, that God set out for them or something like that, right? Like you, you choose the words that you know she needs. Um, and then offer, offer her something that would help her get that. If you have a lead group on Facebook or like a, a group that, that you offer, you know, just to, to build community, that would be a great thing to offer here. Another option that would be really simple is to just say, uh, sign up for my newsletter. Cause I'll be sending you encouragement and new information and stuff like that. Or like you have right now, you could offer a call, right? Um, just, uh, but what we want to have up here up top is to say, hey, you, now I'm talking to you. Here's what I can help you do. Do you want that? Do this, right? And we just want to put that as close to the top of this page as possible because
Thought I did that where it says, hi there.
Hmm. Well, that could be for anybody, can it?
It can. It's not niched enough.
Mm hmm. So, um, so yeah, we, we really wanted to say, hey, this is who I help. Hey, if, if you're this, I am this for you. And then let's get started. Uh, and you do have, you're, you're close to it. And I'm talking about refinement. I'm not saying you need to go throw out what you did here. This is really good. And this is a great place for you to start. But as you start thinking about moving towards sharpening and refining what you have here, that would be the number one recommendation is to come up with something that you can offer them. Maybe you've got a video uh, or maybe you've got a lead group. Um, so we call it a lead magnet, right? So it's a thing that you can offer to them that's free to them that establishes trust, that qualifies them as a great lead for you, right? So if somebody opts in to give their name and email to you through your good oiling system, uh, they want access to this grocery list or this, you know, video series or this affirmation or prayer, whatever, uh, that you're offering for free in exchange for their contact information. That person, once you get a notification from Get Oil Link that, hey, you have a new lead in your system, that is a perfect person for you to start having a really great conversation with that will lead toward oils, right? That'll lead toward them getting started with Young Living. Or if you offer other things as a certified natural health professional, that's someone who could potentially be your client and, and, and that sort of thing. Does that make sense?
It does. When you scroll down, I have squares and they can click on those, but I don't, I didn't want to have like five buttons, six buttons down there.
It's fine to have these. It's fine to have these. We just want to make sure they're contextualized. So that's why we want to say up here really clearly and big up top, hey, here's who, like, hey, you, for you, this is what I do for you. Here's how I can help you get it. And then you offer the thing that helps them move in that direction, right? And maybe they, you know, maybe that particular thing that you're offering up top isn't the thing that resonates with them. And they want to keep scrolling. They read more about you. This is great. They come down here and maybe they actually want, you know, to learn about this, you know, create an extra income, be your own boss. Maybe that's the case. Uh, but the thing that's most pertinent to the thing she wants, right? If, if it's a shade, right? It is a shade for you. Um, so the thing that's most pertinent to what she wants, we really want to put front and center right up at the very top because we have, like, we have nanoseconds, milliseconds, uh, before people get distracted and leave. And if it doesn't say what's in it for them right off the jump in just big bold, right in your face, um, unless they know you and they know they're coming here to look for something, which if you're on social, cool, right? Uh, but as you grow, right? As you build a name for yourself, uh, more people are going to find their way here who need to be grabbed really quickly. And that's how you're going to do that effectively. Does that make sense?
Yes. Thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. You're doing great work. I really like this stripy background. It looks like, it's like a nice calming wallpaper. I really like this. And a better normal, I think, is a fancy, sick name, like good job on that for sure. Um, yeah, this is good. Uh, you could, you could also, uh, offer the session higher up on the page. If you don't, like, if you don't want to offer something, like you, you have any number of different options. And there's, you're not going to know the right one until you start really seeing people showing up and taking action. You'll start to kind of get a feel for, for what works best. Uh, and then from there Uh, and then from there, if you're creating content, so you know, quick little YouTube videos, publish those on your blog, uh, then people are gonna have a better chance of finding you, right? So, um, you are wanting to establish yourself as, as, as someone with a voice, someone who knows what they're talking about, someone who is an authority in the space that you're in. And the thing that really cements that is content, right? So you have a site. It's like a business card. It's nice. But then they want to see, you know, what books you wrote or what podcasts you are on, you know, what, uh, you know, where you were interviewed or whatever, where you've been. Uh, and you don't necessarily have to be an author if you are a blogger or if you have a YouTube channel, right? It gives people an opportunity to get to know you in a more passive way, uh, as they start to decide whether or not moving forward with a call with you, uh, is, is the best next step for them.
Excellent.
Yeah, you're doing great work. I'm really excited to see more of this from you. So definitely keep in touch and feel free to hop back on here at any point.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Let's see. We also have Tina. If you will raise your hand, there you are. I found you. Hi, Tina.
Hey there.
Hey. Alright, I'm going to try to pull up your site right now. Go ahead and let us know what you're looking for in a site review today.
Um, I'm just trying to find out if it's, if it like flows smoothly, like it's, if it attracts people into it.
Okay, I can tell you right now, I love this. Okay. Um, I love this. Um, I love how bold this is. This is- Um, alright, so, uh, okay, one thing real quick. This button right here is a very important button. And I want to talk a little bit more about what we can do with the button in this space in just a second. But why don't you redesign this specific button so that the text on it is white? If you want to keep this dark green color. Uh, this is gonna be a little hard to read. And this, um, this button really contains the primary call to action in the space. And, and really that's all our website is here to do, is to tell people what to do, right? Like, our site needs to tell people, hey, go here. Hey, you want to hear from me more? Do this. Uh, you want to buy from me? Do this, right? So, um, so what I, I would love for you to do is, uh, is, is while you have this set up the way that you have it right now, let's change that button to have a white, uh, white font so that, um, so we can read it more clearly. But then what I want you to start thinking about is, um, is something that you can put underneath this image, a button you can put underneath this image where you can offer something, you know, or they say, where, where you say, you know, do you want to be a part of our journey? Join our, our free group, right? Join our community or offer a lead magnet or something like that. Um, because this is really important real estate. I think that this is fantastic, what you've got right here. But you could take better advantage of it by putting just a little bit of copy and a button here to use this opportunity to grab the attention that you very much just grabbed successfully and get them to do something with it.
Okay.
I love this so much. This is so good.
Would that be, would that be a good place to get them to go into the vault?
Yes, if the offer that's getting them into the vault is something that's very relevant and valuable to them, for sure. Yeah, you know, I've, I have a, I have a 14-day, uh, encouragement series to help you do what? Right? To get back on the path, to whatever that might be, right? Um, just make sure that it is, um, you're helping them get a specific outcome that they're looking for. The reason why they're gonna say yes, uh, to even giving you their email address is gonna be because there's something you promised them that they can do or be or have or become if they do this, right? You're not promising to do the work for them, right? Like, they still gotta do the work. But, um, you want to say, hey, if you do this, here's what you'll get and what it'll do for you or what it could do for you, right? So, yeah, for sure. You can put a vault link here, uh, or you could, well, it wouldn't be a vault link. What you would do is you would, um, if it's a free vault, um, you would set the page settings for, you know, if you, I don't know if you have that on here. No, it's a different page. Um, if one of these, for instance, you know, the hashtag lead on, um, on one of the buttons, um, if your lead form, the pop-up on this page, uh, adds them to the vault, you could certainly do that, for sure. Um, or you just want to have another page that adds them to the vault. Do you, do you have a free thing that you're offering in a vault? This one?
Well, I was thinking about, because I've got the Get Oiling, the 21 Days of Encouragement.
Mm-hmm.
About that.
Okay. Um, so it's 21 Days of Encouragement, but what are we encouraging them to do? And what are they going to be able to be or feel or have after those 21 days? That they're looking for right now. So you, you don't have to change what's there. Um, you could make this the email sequence that they have for the 20, I, is- I know that there's a sway. You're talking about Grow Workspace. I know there's a 21 Days of Encouragement sway. Is there a campaign?
There's also, there is a campaign because I've got it set up as a text right now.
Okay. So, um, so what, what I would encourage you to do is actually put them on the campaign. Say, hey, do you want to get an encouraging message from me and my family, you know, once a day for the next three weeks? When you do, you're going to get, feel, be, do, have, whatever, right? If you're feeling this way, uh, you're gonna start every day feeling this way. Uh, and I'm gonna send you something to encourage you every day for three weeks. If you want that, click the button below, right? Something like that. And you would, you would pop that right here. And in that email campaign, you would edit that and invite them to join the free vault, right? Once they're in the email campaign, right? So just give them a promise and tell them what it's gonna do for them, right? Well, here's, here is what, if you do, give your email, I'm gonna give you something. It's gonna do this for you. And then once they say yes, then you can open up the wide world of opportunity, put them in a Facebook group or in your vault or wherever you want to put them.
Okay.
Yeah. Otherwise, I love this.
Like, how can you tell, like, when, like, when they get to the point, like, right there with, um, the educational community? I like to call my vault a library. And so, so when they sign into it, like, somebody new coming brand new goes into it, how do I know that I've given them? I, I guess this is where I get confused is how do I know that whenever they sign in that I have given them access to everything in there?
Okay, so there are settings. When you- Uh-oh, I don't know if that was me or you, um, with the connection. But when you set up your vault, um, you have, there's a little checkbox that says, uh, let other people in the member area see and join the vault. Uh, that is where you get to decide whether or not people can let themselves in. You also can choose whether or not people let themselves into the member area generally on the member area settings page. Um, so let me ask you this. Um, the educational community is in the single vault, right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and that educational community, is that something that's designed for prospective Young Living members?
I've kinda, I've kinda done it both ways. Like, if somebody new comes in or if it's one of our members that they, that is all in one place.
Okay, that's fine. Um, you can certainly do it that way. Um, what I would do is, um, I would have this go to a landing page that lets them into that vault specifically. And then up here, you could have a, like a members option where they could go log into the member area in your menu. Let me show you an example of this on Jackie's site. Um, so Jackie has members right here where people can log in. They can just go log in from there. Um, she does have a community. I think this one, yeah, th- this is actually, th- this is letting someone into a vault. So Jackie lets people into a lead vault and she's offering that right on the front page of her site. Uh, so join the community. Um, but this is a landing page. When they fill this out, they get access to that vault for her lead. Um, you could set this up and you got, of course, if you want to use your voice, uh, your vault for leads and members, you could certainly do that as well. Uh, but I would have it go off to, uh, to a landing page that puts them into the vault that you want. And then you're gonna know who gets what, um, because, you know, you- Okay. So the only reason why you want to have just any old, anybody, um, get into your member area is if you have a vault that's available to anyone who joins your member area. So, um, an example would be like for Jackie, her, you know, Inflammation Buster is this one, this free one that she had. This, um, this is one that anybody could join. They are gonna have to create a login to her member area, but it's free. She's never charging for it. Um, and anybody could join it. So if somebody maybe signed up with her as a Young Living member and they have access to her members area, even if she didn't specifically add them to this Inflammation Buster's, uh, vault, they can see it and they can choose to join it. And now they have access. That's an instance where you want to do that. But where you have something that's maybe a little more gated, that's supposed to just be for your members or it's something that's for sale, that you want people to only get access to if they see a sales page or something like that, uh, then you're gonna want to, um, not have that setting on. So basically people can't just see it in the member area. So if you've got it open to whomever, um, you certainly do have the ability to just let people sign themselves up. But I think that you're going to be more effective in having them join the free community if when they click this, they go to a landing page. And the landing page has just a little bit more information. What is in this free educational community? What am I gonna find here? What can I expect? And tha- and that includes, you know, after you, after you enter your information in here, I'm going to send you an email that is going to give you instructions on how to access our community, right? Because there's just not enough space right here to give all that information without it taking up so much, uh, you know, just being too much on the page. So let this go off to a landing page, uh, where you, you're basically selling access to this free thing, right? You're pitching on, on why they need to have it, like what it's gonna do for them. And then you have that vault, that landing page, add them to the vault. You, you know how to work that setting, right? Where you can choose to add to vault from a landing page?
Uh, I think so. Down at the bottom in the right-hand corner, like-
Here, let me show you real quick. It's, um, here, I'm in Justice Site right now. Um, so if I go to landing pages and she's got this one, are you into natural living? Uh, if we go to settings, and this, if you're using a landing page, you could use a custom page with a pop-up for this as well. Uh, add to vault, right down here, bottom line.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yep. And then if you're using a landing page, you could also show a message after registration. And this is where you say, go check your email right now. It's gonna have instructions on how you can get this uh, to, to our educational group. But on this page, this is where you would want to say, you know, here's the, you know, you're gonna get this, you're gonna get that, it's gonna be this and that and whatever. Um, and I would actually recommend the landing page version. I want to say, is it like, Greg, which, which landing page version is it? That has, uh, the multiple, I think we used it for the gardening and oils one for Grow Workspace. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Uh, seven and eight are similar to nine, if that's what you were going. And they do have multiple sections. One has two sections, one has three.
Yeah.
I want it to be.
Yeah, this one's a two-section, that's seven, and then eight. So if you wanted to share some additional information, so we say, you know, hey, you know, come join our community. It's got this, that, and the other thing. It also has these things and those things. Let's get it. Come in and get it, right? And then just set it up to where it adds them to a vault.
Okay. And so right there where they sign, put their information, that's where I connect to the vault page.
That's, yeah, yeah. So all, all you would have to do is just go to page settings and then select the vault that you want them to be added to. And that's gonna send them the, um, whatever, uh, vault email that you have attached. So if you're, um, if it's just the system, welcome to vault email, it's just gonna send them an email that says, you know, hey, you've got access. Congratulations. Click here and use this email address when you, when you log in.
Okay. I think that's where I was getting confused, like, when you very first sign in and you can get all the different vaults versus them getting straight into the vault.
Yeah, yeah. So what, what I would encourage you to do, um, you know, unless you have something like, um, you know, four or five different courses and things like that that you offer and people, you want to kind of give people the option to shop around in there. Um, I, I would encourage you to just send them in one direction because, uh, if you, if you give them too many options, they'll take none of them.
Okay.
Right? So, um, tell them why they want it, why this is gonna help them, uh, and then what they have to do to get it. And so in this case, it's, you know, click here to join our community. They go off to, in this case, let's go off to a landing page where they learn, well, what, why would I want to join this? What's in it for me? What can I expect? Okay, I want it. And then after they, uh, enter their information, then they're, they're connected over to the vault.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Awesome. Awesome. Um, you're doing really good work. I just, I'm so tickled with this top section of your page. Just take advantage of the attention that you're grabbing right here and say, hey, you! I know why you're here. I have something that'll help you. Here's how you get it. And then offer that so you can get that lead.
Okay.
Okay. I'm excited to see what you do with this. Good work.
Thank you.
Wow. Alright, feel free to come on again and we can take a look at what you're doing in the future. Awesome. Alright, you guys went a little over today. Uh, did we have any outstanding questions? I think we're good. Y'all have pauses over here in the, in the chat and the Q and A. As usual, go team. Um, cool. Alright, well, you guys, uh, will be live, uh, with Jackie. It's jackymcgloughlin.com/ platinum. Please spell platinum correctly and you'll find it. And, um, yeah, I really look forward to seeing you on that training at 1:30 and we'll be back here next week. So y'all have a good week and we'll see you soon. Have a great week. Bye.
Bye.